Yes, we do have that interview.
What do you need to start with to come talk about?
There's my call.
Just me?
It's for the Civil Service.
Okay, Jane is on, great.
I'm on. All right.
All right, good morning, everyone. We're having a few technical difficulties, so apologies for the delay. But the short of it is, is that the server for TV5 isn't working, so it's not streaming. It is on Facebook Live, and there is a number to call in, which I'll give in a moment. But based on advice from our legal department, we have complied with the public notice rules and current Open Public Meeting Act by noticing that the phone option is available. So, but there may be people you know or in your network that were expecting to attend by WebEx and are having, and may have difficulty or something. So I'm just going to repeat, the number is 408-418-9388. That's to call in, 408-418-9388. And the user access code is 1-872293294, 1-872293294. So, we will do our best, and our agenda today is, we're going to have an update on COVID response from Sarah, and we're going to have an interview for the Civil Service Commission appointee, and then we're going to have a joint Civil Service Commission meeting with the city council, and then we'll have some discussion on progress on 100-day goals that we passed by resolution on February 1st. So with that, Sarah, take it away.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everybody. Great news today in our state where all adults aged 16 and over are now eligible for a vaccine. So folks are no longer required to go through the Face Finder tool from Washington State Department of Health. You can just make an appointment with your primary care provider at the arena, at any of our pharmacies, any of those opportunities via the hotline that you can call or online to make those appointments. There was no COVID recovery meeting this week, that we've moved to a meeting every other week schedule, but I do have their data reports, so I'm just going to share a few of the highlights stats, and then I will move into some behavioral health information. The state behavioral health team puts out reports about every couple weeks, and so I just want to share a few of those things, and I'll be as quick as possible without talking too quickly. Okay, so our daily averages were positives, it's going to be 85 people per week. Those age groups, we're looking at a unique trend this week. It looks like the age group of 20 to 29 is carrying 30% of infections, and then another 16% are among the age group of 10 to 19, another 14% among those aged 30 to 39. New cases by race, white is 79%, other or unknown is 8%, Hispanic is 6%, Pacific Islander is 1%, black is 3%, American Indian is 1%, and Asian is 3%. For the rate of infections per 100,000 people, which is one of our metrics to be able to move into forward phases or not to go backwards in a phase, the goal is 200 per 100,000. We are currently at 220 per 100,000 residents, so we are not meeting that metric as of right now. New hospitalizations, for this week, we have 17 new hospitalizations, that's up from 27 last week. Currently, and this was as of 4/12, so you have to forgive me, this could be a different number, there were 35 altogether hospitalized as of 4/12. One new death individually in their 90s compared with five deaths last week. Our average number of tests per day is about 975. Our positivity rate of those tests, or the number of tests that are, come back positive for COVID, is 6%. Healthcare system readiness is looking good. We don't have any surge going on, and our ICU census is at 68.5% availability. As of April 7th, approximately 19.66 of our community here in Spokane have been fully vaccinated, and another 28% have received at least one dose. Our isolation facilities are looking good, both, one, the hotels at about 11% capacity, so they've got quite a bit, and the Immaculate Heart Retreat is at about 33%, so still a lot of space there for that. All right, so just to go into the behavioral health report, there are five indicators, five areas that are used to establish and assess behavioral health symptoms by the state, and those are called syndromic indicators. And all five of those are up compared to 2020 and 2019 trends for the last eight weeks. So for eight weeks in a row, all five of those indicators, which I'm going to show on a graph here in a moment, are up from historical data reports. Now, I don't have that information specific to our Spokane region, however, it's still pretty significant, and if desired, I'm sure that information could be gleaned. So give me one moment, and I will share my screen with you. Trying to figure out which one to share. Okay. Council President, can I get a nod if you can see it?
It looks like it's loading, but it hasn't fully loaded yet.
Copy that. Is it loaded?
No, maybe retry.
All right.
Oh, come on.
All right. It's worth sharing, otherwise I wouldn't try so hard. Just one sec. Let's try this. Move it to a different screen. Can we see that?
No, it's, your screen is black, so it looks like you're sharing, but it's a black screen.
Try one more time, and if it doesn't work, I'll just send it out, and we'll have to let it go. I don't want to waste further time.
All right, it said it was sharing, but it's still a gray on black screen, so turn.
All right.
But, yep, send it to us. Thank you for trying.
Absolutely. Just a few more data points to read out, and we'll call. Those are up from last, the last eight weeks, if they've been up. For folks who have survived COVID infection, adults aged 65 and above are seeing a slight increase in the diagnosis of dementia in the first 14 to 90 days after their diagnosis. All individuals, even mild cases of COVID-19, are at higher risk for depression and anxiety following their infection. So regarding unemployment, the National Bureau of Economic Research reported that the size of the COVID-19-related unemployment might be between two and five times larger than the typical unemployment shock, depending on race and gender, resulting in a 3% increase in mortality rate and a 0.5% drop in life expectancy over the next 15 years. Also predicted a shock will disproportionately affect black Americans and women in the short term, while white men might suffer large consequences in the long term. There's a potential for violence and aggression. There's been increases in FBI background checks for hand gun sales in January of 2021, which could indicate significantly more risk for gun violence. Most importantly, those firearm background checks in January of this year were the third highest one-month total on record for our state. One last statistic here. Mental health-related visits to emergency departments for children aged 5 to 17 from April to October of last year increased by 25% to 31% compared to the previous year. So we're seeing some really serious mental health effects on our community and on our children, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to share those graphs with you next report. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you so much, Sarah. And now we have, as, maybe not a coincidence, but we have a nominee for the Civil Service Commission, Nicole Palmerton, who I didn't realize was on the agenda today, but she is my neighbor, so glad to see you, Nicole. We see each other walking in the mornings often. And so Nicole--
Morning.
Nicole, what we do is, we just want to hear a little bit about you and your background, and why you're interested in this position, and, you know, Councilmember Stratton may ask you where you went to high school, even though you didn't go to high school here. But, you know, we may have some questions, but really, we just want to get a little bit of a sense of you, and we're so excited that you have agreed to volunteer for this position, so I'll give it to you.
Hey, great, thank you. First of all, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, because that was, I was struggling with that the other day. With the mayor, which was really handy, but anyway, I'm from upstate New York, Buffalo, New York originally. I went to high school at a place called Park School, and it was a lovely, lovely place, but not nearly as lovely as Spokane. I'm currently a practicing attorney here in both Washington and Idaho. I have my license on, as you can see behind me, in both states. And I am working with a firm that comes out of Seattle. I am the supervising attorney here in the Spokane office. I wanted to get involved with my new community when I moved here two years ago, and initially I was quasi-recruited by the neighborhood to the first neighborhood council meeting, which was really what lit the fire for me, because I saw that there was this great opportunity to be active in my neighborhood and organized way to do that, which is something I didn't really have back east in my old city. So I was very interested in becoming a part of that group, which I did, and I'm on the executive board with the Rockwood neighborhood. And I found that I really enjoyed that type of service, and so I wanted to get more deeply involved with the city as a whole, not just the neighborhood, and so I embarked on this mission. So that's why I wanted to be involved, and there are a lot of opportunities, which I think is fantastic in Spokane, for regular citizens to be involved in their city government, and I really, I'm very impressed by that, and I, it's just another reason why I love my new town so much. But this particular post seemed to sort of go in line with my 20 years of being an attorney. So as much as I enjoy some of the other boards and commissions as well, this one did seem to be kind of the best fit, considering my background as an attorney, and I'm not very good when it comes to planting and gardening and things like that, although I really try, so.
Excellent, all right. All right, thanks for that--
If there are any questions--
Yeah, thanks for that introduction. It looked like I see, I saw Councilmember Michael Cathcart first, and then Councilmember Karen Stratton. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, thank you so much for visiting with us this morning. I'm just curious, do you see need, based on what you know now, do you see the need for any reforms within civil service, and if so, can you give any examples of what those might be?
Well, I'm a firm believer in evolution and evolving processes and things that, as we grow as a group, as we grow as a community, as things change in our communities, there's, I think, always room to revisit and continue to be cognizant of what that evolution might look like. As I sit here today, there's nothing in particular that jumps out at me that I think is a glaring issue, and even, I think even if there were, I don't think I would speak to it this early on. I think you have to get involved, get your hands a little dirty, roll your sleeves up before you can really jump into making, you know, changes. At least that's been my take on things as I've gone through my career.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton.
I'll be good, I promise. So first, it's personal, you're from Buffalo, and do you know where Troy is? Troy, New York?
Right outside of Rochester.
So have you heard of Rensselaer?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's where our son went to school.
Ah, very nice.
Yeah, so that's a little personal piece. My big question is, do you, and I may have missed this, do you have a background in employment law at all?
Not very specifically employment law. I was in private practice for 10 years as a litigator, and I would have certainly, you know, occasional cases that involved employment law. So I, you know, I have a loose working knowledge of how it works. I have some instinct on how it works. But as managing attorney for a progressive insurance company for the upstate law firm, or, you know, attorneys, there were, you know, a lot of training sessions that involved employment law, ADA, you know, discrimination, you know, we really had to be up to speed on a lot of that, a lot of those rules and regs as a managing attorney, because I managed both exempt and non-exempt employees.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Nicole, for spending some time with us. We do vote on it on Monday. It's nothing that you do anything further on, you've already done your obligation on that, and we will look forward to your service, and thank you so, so much. So take care.
All right, thank you. And would it be okay if I listened in on the later portion, which may or may not be relevant?
Yes, no, I was, I didn't want to impose on you, but I'm hoping you will, so it'll be a good start. So, yes, please stay on the call. Yeah, and that brings us to the heart of our meeting today, which is a joint Civil Service Commission meeting and the city council, and it's, you know, purely information exchange. There's no action that's happening, that's planned. But I know in my five years on the council, plus a month or so, I've never been at a joint meeting with the Civil Service Commission, and so I'm really excited to have members here. I know Mark Lindsey is the chair, but I don't necessarily see him. I see Judith Gilmore, who's the vice chair, and so, and I'm not sure exactly which staff are here or not, because there's a conference room with a few people. So maybe I'll turn it over to you, Judith, as I, if you're the highest ranking member of the Civil Service Commission, just to introduce who's here from your side, and then we can talk about, maybe some subjects to talk about further. But let's, I want to welcome you, Judith. You're no stranger to city council, but thank you for joining us, and let us know who's here from your side.
Thank you, Ryan. Actually, I can see our chair. There he is. Mark is right there.
All right, well, I'll turn it over to you, Mark, and I'm so sorry, I didn't, I've got names on everything, but I didn't have the name for that. So, Mr. Lindsey, welcome.
That's okay. Commissioner Gilmore can do it.
All right, I guess he is going to let you introduce people.
All right. Well, that is Mark Lindsey, our, the chair of the current commission. Also, Commissioner Scott Stevens is also present. Formerly, among many other things he does in the community, was our police chief for a while, so he knows a little bit about civil service. Mark Lindsey is a prosecuting attorney at the county, so he knows just a little something, has been there as long as I've known him, so I don't know how many years that is, Mark, that you've been at the county. Also, I see Craig Holt somewhere here. I saw him, there he is, Commissioner Holt, who I believe right now is the longest-serving member on the commission, unless I'm mistaken, and he does all sorts of incredible things in the community, both professionally and voluntarily. And I am Judith Gilmore, I'm the vice chair of the commission. I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm going into my fourth year this year. I know that at the beginning of my first term, we had done a rules review, which is something the commission and all the stakeholders do every five years. While five years is not the only time we look at rules, any major changes that are done to this, what those of us on civil service call our Bible, and I'm sure our new potential member has been given a copy of this, this is gone over page by page. It's an arduous process, sometimes spending hours on one or two words, but everybody comes out of those meetings, pretty much, if not totally happy, accepting what the rules are, that the commission then follows as we go through the processes of the various items that come before us. I believe certainly there must be a question from the council today. I know that you are aware that we are in the search for a new chief examiner, and that's, the deadline for that ended on Monday. We know, those applications have been reviewed. We have persons who have met the qualifications, and those applications and resumes will be sent out to the commission, I believe either yet this week or at the 1st of next week. We have a regular commission meeting, by the way, everyone, the third Tuesday of every month, beginning at precisely 9:30 in the morning, usually in council chambers, but these days, the same venue that's being used today. And at that meeting, we will be determining our timeline for interviews of these individuals. We really want to get a permanent chief examiner in place within a short amount of time. So now that the applications are closed and we have qualified applicants, we will move forward in the interviewing of those applicants. That's sort of the introduction I have.
All right, well, thank you for that.
I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would only, I would conclude my little speech there with, civil service is a very unique system, a merit system, and I'm, it's a great, I think the first two pages of this Civil Service Commission book give a really good overview of why there is civil service, why it's independent, why it must remain independent always, and what the importance is of civil service as you hire persons to run your city, and that's what you do. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, so I think one of the main purposes for this meeting is to learn a little more from you all, to the degree you're willing to talk about, about what's going on at civil service these days, what are the big issues, any challenges that you might be facing, any additional support from the council or the city in general that would help you take on those challenges, and I'll, you know, riff off Councilmember Cathcart, any potential reform ideas that are out there, but just kind of, I think, an opportunity to tell us, and I say this to all of you commissioners, and we can just take turns telling us your perspective on it, because we, even though this is a really important part of the city, we don't have, we don't rub shoulders with you too much in this capacity, so it'd be good to hear from you on that, and council members may have individual questions as well, and then by the same token, you might have questions for us of what the heck city council is up to these days as it relates to your concerns and interests. So I really just want to kind of open it up and give first priority to commission members who are here, but I'll just, you know, look on the screen for people raising their hands and call them people. So I'll just kick it off to either yourself, Commissioner Gilmore, or any of the other commissioners.
Well, I'm going to wait for one of my co-commissioners to raise their hands, but they know that I rarely wait too long. So what I'm going to start out by saying, and maybe get this ball rolling a bit here, is something that I know I have asked continuously for help from HR, both under the auspices of Christine Kavanagh and now under a new director, Amber Richards. What I believe is really important to the city is, the council is fully aware-- What I believe is really important to the city is the council is fully aware of when every department hires their staff using the civil service test, et cetera. Then you go through a process of that person being a line worker usually, and, or maybe they're management professionals, so they're in the M&amp;P section. But let's just say we're working with line individuals, water, sewer, all of those people that are not right there in City Hall. You spend a lot of time training those individuals to know that department, to know those jobs. Those are the very same people who want to test and move up the ranks frequently to become ultimately supervisors in those departments. The city is very lax, and I don't know how Amber Richards feels about this, but I do know that Christine Kavanaugh always agreed with me that the city has done a very poor job of training people who are line workers to become good supervisors. You know, you can have a really good, you can have a really good engineer, you can have a really good equipment operator, but when they get to a point that they need to deal with people every day and schedule them and work with issues of problems, they're not always so good at that, and we need to train them more so that we don't lose those individuals to private industry once we work them through all those years of having all that experience. And that's, that's a real rub with me that I have seen for a long time, that I believe we should do a better job out at the city and keep our employees.
Okay.
So, fellow commissioners, there you go.
Yep. And thanks for that. But yeah.
They're not this quiet.
Yeah. Okay, Craig.
Well, hello. I'm typically very shy, but Commissioner Gilmore motivates me to jump in. I have a horrible echo on my end, so I'll turn my volume down. Maybe that will help. Well, thank you. I don't know how long I've been on the civil service, but it seems like a long time appointed, I believe by Mayor Werner, that goes way back, and then reappointed by our previous mayor, and I believe our current mayor is going to have the opportunity to reappoint me at her discretion. I am a, an appointed position by the mayor. This is an incredible commission, council members and everybody that you have in front of you. They're dedicated, they take their jobs incredibly seriously, and most importantly, they keep me out of trouble. I am the lone person without city experience. I have not a human resources manager, I'm not an attorney, I'm just a businessperson who tries to look at things and see if they make sense. I'm very pleased that we're meeting here today. Had an interaction with a prior council member many years ago, as this council member was knocking on doors in my neighborhood looking for votes, I introduced myself as a civil service commission commissioner. Not a very warm response from that individual, doesn't matter who, I'll just let you know. I've made invitations to administration, city administration, high-ups to city council members in the past. Attend some of these meetings. When you see the agenda and you see an appeal of a decision, come, watch, listen, tune in. These are actions that are taken very seriously by this commission, and for the betterment of our population, for the protection of the employee, for the protection of city resources. And then we do have our good legal representative, Mr. Piccolo, who makes sure that mostly I don't get the commission in trouble. We have a little thing, and he hasn't tugged his ear yet, so when he tugs his ear, it usually means I'm going in a wrong direction. So he's, he has his hand at the ready. He's ready to move up to the ear, but he hasn't done it yet. So thanks for having this meeting, and really, the Civil Service Commission provides a valuable resource, and every single one of us takes this job incredibly seriously. And so I just want to put that out there and say thanks for, for seeing us today.
Great. Other commissioners?
I want to just pop in here to remind, to remind everybody that our staff has done a remarkable job this year with all the COVID restrictions. They have, if, they've gotten way behind in testing, but they had just started a new process whereby rather than making people from a department that does not work in City Hall come down to City Hall for tests, they had worked out a process where they could go out and do those tests in the field, which I thought was an amazing thing for them to do. They've been really, they have just been so great to work with of the struggles this year, and I, I know everybody knows what those are, but I want to be sure before this meeting is over that we, we thank our stand-in chief examiner, and all of, all of the staff at, at the commission who have done everything they could do this year.
Great. And that brings up, we did have a few questions from council that people emailed us. One of them was, does civil service staff share any staff with HR? Are they completely separate?
Well, it's important to recognize, can you hear me?
Yes, Mark. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's important to recognize the difference between human resources and civil service. Human resources is the tool, management is the department that's appointed by the mayor. That's not true for civil service. Human resources represents management. The unions, M&amp;P and 270 represent the employees. Civil service provides a forum for classification determinations, job qualifications, it provides a forum when there's disagreement between management and labor. And so, human resources and civil service are distinctly different departments and serve distinctly different, I guess, goals. And so, joining civil service, I mean, this has been a major goal since I joined civil service. Commissioner Holt, when he was the chair, and myself as the vice chair, put that one down under, was it two administrations ago, where they said, well, we need to do something, civil service needs to be, the department needs to be controlled by human resources. I believe that is totally inappropriate, and that human resources needs to fulfill its obligations to the citizen, citizens and the employees. But the employees need the civil service department in order to be able to have a neutral, detached place to become informed about opportunities within the city, make sure that there is a merit system in place that actually awards merit as opposed to political cronyism. And that, your commissioners for the civil service, the city pays us about, what is it, $3, $5 a month? Okay? So this is primarily a voluntary obligation on our parts, and we, we take it very seriously, and we end up at odds with human resources whenever they try to interfere. We don't have any problem, our staff doesn't have any problem, the chief examiner doesn't have any problem working with human resources, as President Biggs is well aware and the rest of the council, your current human resources director was our last chief examiner. And some of the proposals, nobody from the council has reached out, to the best of my knowledge, to any of the commissioners with questions about what's going on, and we hear rumors and rumblings coming back about how we should reform a system that, quite frankly, is under constant review and doesn't need the input of human resources with respect to how we do our, the department does its job. So if there are questions about what the civil service department's mission is and what the commission's oversight basically does, you need to ask us, but more, I agree with Vice Chair Gilmore and Commissioner Holt, come to the meetings. When we have an appeal, either from the city or the employee, we end up having to take testimony, we end up having to make decisions, and those decisions are life-changing. And the council already knows some of the decisions that the commission has had to make based upon the appeal. If the process is not followed properly, if the parties don't follow the process that's set forth in the Bible, this vice chair Gilmore said, they leave the commission little or no opportunity or discretion to go outside that. And some of the appeals that we've had to rule on, we've had to go back to the rules and say, did you follow the process? This is no different than going downtown to the square court or a municipal court. If you don't follow the process, then you can't expect the result that you're seeking. And that's part of the problem that we've been having, is that human resources gets involved with this, and we're not sure who they represent in that process. And so the commission sits there, we, like I said, we come down here once a month, and so we are not down here all the time, and we have to rely upon the staff and the chief examiner of the, of the department to inform us and keep us advised of what's going on. It's important for the council to know that the process with respect to discipline and so on runs through the civil service department, and the chief examiner is the primary determiner of those issues, and then that determination can be appealed to the commission, but it has to, has to go through the process. So, I'll drop my soapbox.
Great. Well, you know, one of the reasons I requested this meeting was so that we could get these perspectives for all of us at the same time, so we're not playing the telephone game of things. And I'm, I really appreciated your answer about sharing staff, just, but just to be clear, in case anyone heard the question differently than I thought it was intended, it wasn't, it wasn't my particular question, but it wasn't, it wasn't asking whether or not we should share staff between HR and civil service. The question was really, does civil service rely on any HR staff for anything? Not, not whether we should put those two functions together, and it sounds like it's pretty independent, but I'm just rephrasing that question in case someone has information about whether civil service relies on HR staff for any of its functions.
Well, the best source for that is the chief examiner.
Yep. You're on mute, Judith, and then Karen has a question, but go ahead, Judith.
I wanted to.
Now I can hear you.
I wanted to, I wanted to just say, we did use the services of an HR staff, Ms. Bergen, because we had applicants that were going for the chief examiner job, that were going to actually come from civil service staff, we wanted an independent review of those. And so we did ask HR for that. So yes, we do on occasion certainly ask opinions of HR, and certainly for the help in something like this.
Yep. That makes sense. Councilmember Stratton.
So that was my question, and I appreciate that answer because I'm a big supporter of civil service. The reason I asked that now, the reason I'm asking the question now at this meeting is that, just so you all know, that that is, that is, that concept of sharing staff is still, I mean, I heard it less than a month ago. So I'm glad to hear, and I thought your answer was great, so thank you so much for that. But that concept is still kind of being floated around, or I don't know if any other council members have heard it, but I've heard it a few times. So thank you for that answer. It makes me feel better. I appreciate that.
I, I think it's fair, I'll see, fair to say that council has not been having organized or structured conversations about that, so, but, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I do believe that civil service needs to change, at least in some, some way. I think we need to streamline the process to enable us to, to hire quicker, but more importantly, I really truly believe that we need some sort of process for targeted hiring. I think if there are people with certain skill sets, experiences that we want to hire, we should have the ability to do those, direct outreach and direct hiring. And, and I think too, in terms of just cultivating, for example, a police force that better kind of represents this community, I think that that's important as well. And so I'm curious from the Civil Service Commission's perspective, are there some reforms that the commission itself is open to or interested in pursuing? Whether that would be reforms to the code, to the charter? Is there, is there an interest in bringing recommendations for potential changes to, to council to, to consider and look at? I know 53J under the charter kind of gives you guys the ability to investigate some of these things on your own initiative, and so just kind of curious what the, the commission's view is on that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gilmore.
I would, I would, first, I'm not sure you can see the, the depth of this. I'm going to fold this up here. There's a bit of a study that we did on civil services across the country about a year ago, with people with some of the very same questions as you, Councilmember Cathcart, First of all, just like the rule review committee, civil service, the rule review committee is done by all our stakeholders, civil service sees themselves as, if you will, let's just, because I can't think of another word right now, we're a business and all the stakeholders are our customers. So we want to know that we're doing the best for our customers as possible, and that's the employees of the city, un-uniformed, uniformed. I think that if we were to look at any potential changes anywhere, and quite frankly, Councilman Cathcart, your statement about being able to go out and hire a person with skills, that happens in exempt positions all the time in the city, but that does not happen for the very reasons that a friend of Councilman Cathcart's gets a job, but the other person didn't. So that's what civil service is for in a nutshell. Is there a way? We have actually talked at civil service levels about going out, and in fact, I believe civil service had already begun this when, when the horrible pandemic hit, but we wanted to go out and talk to, to try to get more groups, to better understand what it takes to take a civil service test. It isn't a frightening thing, but you do have to have, it's a good idea to have some background in how you take those tests. So we wanted to go out to areas of our city that may be people that may very well have skills, but had never really thought about going to work for the city. And I think that our current staff, although they're far too small to be doing this, I have to tell you, particularly now with the catch-up that they've got to do, but it's certainly something that I think we want to look at in the future, is how do we get information out to the general public? Here's how you could apply. Here's how you can take the test. And take the test more than once, even if it isn't a job that you really think you might want, take the test to get used to taking a test, and then when you take what you really want, you, you may do quite well. But I think anything that we would look at, and I, this, this commission is open, has, at least in my opinion, everybody on here has been open to all types of suggestions or questions. If somebody wanted to provide us with a question of why wouldn't you want to change this or that, I think certainly we would listen to that, but I have to tell you, we wouldn't listen to it or give it a lot of thought without input from our stakeholders. I mean, that's a very important part of our business.
I, I appreciate that, Judith, and I, I think, you know, there would certainly be a role for civil service if there were changes, to, to make sure that there's no nepotism or, or anything like that that's going on, and, and to, to take a look at that candidate who's been identified by a department head to, to be hired. So I, I don't think there'd be an elimination of what civil service does, but perhaps a streamlined process to, to allow it to work quicker, better, and, and more effectively.
Mr. Stevens.
Let me unmute myself first, and, and so I thank you as the council members for being here today. It's, uh, I've been sitting, listening. It's, I've been sitting, listening, and taking it in, and it's, it's wonderful that we're able to share this level of communication with each other. So thank you for reaching out to us and making this happen. From my perspective, I, I wanted to address some of the questions, comments that Council Member Cathcart just raised. And I think that from that perspective of looking at civil service in general, I think that for a lot of people, they look at that as the system is an antiquated notion, that that really is a roadblock to getting people into the public service. And so from, I have to admit, probably in my former life, I might have thought that same thing, and wished that things were streamlined and faster. And I think that from working with this particular commission and the members on it, I know that every single person that is on this commission is dedicated to the goal of attracting, hiring, retaining qualified personnel to enter into the public service, and to do that in a merit-based manner. And I also know that it is our goal to hire a workforce that is very reflective of the community that they're serving. And so I, it's, if you were to ask us, are there things that we could do to improve that? Well, absolutely. I believe that Nicole mentioned this earlier, she described it as an evolution, and systems should be constantly evolving to stay relevant and effective and to meet those goals that we all have. Council President Beggs mentioned, is there, you know, things that are detractors from getting some of these things done? And from my perspective, I know Commissioner Lindsay mentioned appeals. And one of the things I've noted since I've been here is that, again, this is not unique to our organization, but there seems to be a, a fair degree of inconsistent application of disciplinary processes and following the, the rule book, you know? And this is how you do it. You do step A, step B, step C. And then when those appeals come before the commission, if the investigation isn't thorough, accurate, and complete, like any other quasi judicial body, we have to look at the evidence that's presented to us. And oftentimes, people will look at that and say, oh, my gosh, how did the, how did the commission come up with that ruling? It's like, well, we had to do it in what was based and, and given to us and presented to us. And so the other thing is, I would talk about just that importance of making sure we're getting that consistent documentation from department to department to department, because we do get a lot of information that comes forward with, well, yeah, that, that, you know, that person was talked to about that, but can't really tell you when or what, what the result of it was, or, and no, we don't have it documented very well. So when I look at roadblocks to ensuring that we do meet that goal of, of attracting, hiring, and retaining merit-based, qualified, great people to serve the citizens of the city, there are sometimes little roadblocks that bump up against that goal. And as a commission, we, we look at those and, and obviously, we're always open to feedback to say, how can we be more effective, efficient, and productive in, in getting those targeted groups that we might want to hire? How do we attract them? How do we make sure they're, as Commissioner Gilmore mentioned, how do we make sure that they're familiar with how to go through the testing procedures for applying for a civil service job? So I think those are, those are some of the things in a nutshell that I would address and say, I appreciate the opportunity to just push that information at you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm just concerned in this really competitive environment that we have to find good employees. What are you seeing then that we could do on council? Are we looking at compensation? Is it really outreach? You know, I just heard anecdotally, you know, sometimes there's inside information that they have a family member, a friend, who helps them with the testing, and that makes it easier, and they get in, and then other just opportunities, or you come in as a temp seasonal, then you know the system, so then you're ahead of it. And so really, with this outreach and try to have our workforce reflect the diversity of our community, I would just need to be reassured that we are being really intentional in how we do that. I had heard some data that, you know, a third of our workforce could potentially be able to retire at any time. And are we ready to really meet those types of challenges? We have openings now that need to be filled because those needs for our citizens are not being met. That's the chatter I hear and want to know how we can really partner with civil services to get on with that. But I'm concerned about a big brain drain in human capital.
Bree, and I'd love to ask.
Go ahead.
Our, our acting chief examiner, maybe she could answer Councilwoman Wilkerson's, some of the part of her, or parts of her question that I heard, that I think Kelsey might have some answers to.
Yep.
Thanks, Judith. Yeah, thanks, Judith. I can't answer some of those questions, Councilmember Wilkerson. You know, this is, you are right, we are struggling, we struggle to recruit for a lot of different types of positions. The last, you know, 2020 was a particularly difficult year, obviously. We're not alone in that. I think everyone struggled through 2020. We still managed in 2020 with a pandemic to do more than 100 recruitments last year. We kept, we kept things moving. Outreach, outreach and communications and recruitment is always an issue. It's certainly been a bigger issue for us in this, in this current environment. We have a plan, and I think actually I will go ahead and email all, all the council members what our communication plan is for 2021, the new things that we are doing, the new, some of the newer outreach we're doing. We're doing a new pathways to public service, which we're, which actually the first one or the second one is today at 12:30. We do them once a month, on a Thursday, Thursdays of the month, one at 12:30 in the afternoon, and then one again at 5:30 in the evening. We have not been able to do anything in person since we started these, so they're just virtual now. But our goal eventually will, will be that we'll be at public libraries, we'll be at community centers, we'll be doing more of this outreach, we'll be coming with a, with a bunch of laptops to get people, you know, signed up. How do you create an account in, in governmentjobs.com? How do you use our system? It certainly is a concern of ours, for sure, council member, and it is something on our radar all the time. One is kind of sort of new thing that we're going to do this summer, because we have a lot of entry-level laboring type positions that are going to be opening up for recruitment that get our very large recruitments. We usually get at least a couple hundred to up to 600 people apply for most of these jobs with social distancing. What we've ended up doing, we're going to open them all up for one week. We're going to do all the testing at Farrak High School, and we're just going to let people test all day from 8:00 AM in the morning till 8:00 PM in the morning, Monday through Saturday. I'll push out some more information as we get closer to that. It's going to be in July. But if that's something that's successful and we see a lot of response to, we'll probably continue to do more of that testing, where it's, you know, we're out there really getting a better, you know, we're getting all the people, all the people everywhere. And, you know, I think even, even having a computer and having our stuff online is a barrier for some people who don't have computers at home or who don't have Wi-Fi. We're going to try to accommodate that for some of these entry-level positions this summer by maybe doing, you know, application day at Riverfront Park, or someplace centrally located for people. So certainly, there's a lot. COVID, I don't want to say yay for a pandemic, but it really has pushed us in the last year to try new things, to get more creative. You know, Commissioner Gilmore spoke to that, we're now doing most promotional testing out at the department. You know, in hindsight, we sort of look back and think, why weren't we doing this before? It's very popular. People don't want to come downtown. So I, I think that we keep pushing, you know, keep pushing and, you know, evolving is very important. So, did I, did I touch on everything you asked?
You did.
Okay.
And I look forward to your next meeting. I'll see you there.
Yes, please join us. It's a, we're a, we're a good, you know, we have great staff and we love our commission. So please join us.
Councilmember Wilkerson. I'm muted.
We can't hear you. Judith, we can't hear you. All right, you're.
All right, now.
Try it again. Nope. What does she, what does she show? It shows you can talk now. Oh, but.
Nope.
She left. Okay, well, she'll come back, I'm sure, tell us. So the other question that council members sent me, and this might be for Kelsey as well as anyone else, but it, the biggest complaint we hear from city, at city council from the administration that impacts us is we'll, we'll create, we'll fund a position or create a position, for example, the civil rights position, and then we'll hear that it's going to take nine months to a year to get that fully defined and the right test and the list of people. So I'm just wondering what ideas you might have for speeding that up, including more staff? So just, you know, we, we, we have resources. Or, and this isn't exactly what Councilmember Cathcart was saying, but it's, it's a little bit of a version of it, of are there types of positions that are very unique and not like a laborer one, not like a uniformed officer, uniform firefighter, where there's a more expedited process? Not that the department heads are hiring, not that you're not doing your qualifications and your lists, but that it's just more expedited when it's really almost a one or two-off kind of position as opposed to a major position. I'm just wondering your thoughts on how to break that logjam, which we seem to hear about a lot. I'm not sure if it's really big in the scheme of things, but that's what council hears about from administration, particularly in positions that are a little less traditional or maybe new technology kind of positions.
Sure, I can absolutely speak to that. I think, you know, if we were to get specific, a lot of the time, we, we don't follow department's budget. I don't know what's in anybody's budget until they come and say, hey, I have this position, and it's actually budgeted for the year, and we don't have anything in existence. I mean, if we wanted to be specific about the civil rights coordinator position, we have a job spec, we created a job spec for it back in 2018, I think, when it was sort of originally. But I think that what ends up happening, not all the time, but in this particular instance, is that we cycled through different managers, it didn't get put in a budget, and there, so it just sat in our will. We never tested for it, we didn't, we didn't think there was any need to recruit for it at that time because it wasn't getting filled. That is not uncommon for we, to get a request from a department and then realize, you know, three months down the road, well, we don't actually have any funding for this, or we've never taken this to council yet, or we're hoping it's in the budget for next year. It, it's not, I mean, we understand that requests that come into our department are, feel like an emergency for every department. I get that. I know as a hiring manager, that if I had a vacant position that I could not fill right away, that feels like an emergency. Absolutely, we understand that. And we prioritize work in a pretty particular way. One, I don't usually give timeframes like, hey, it's going to take a year. A year would be something ridiculous. I wouldn't, that would be very uncommon for me to say it's going to take a whole year. But, you know, is it public safety? Is that, that's going to rise to the top of, you know, to the top of the queue? Is it a public safety position? Is there some sort of federally mandated staffing level? That's going to rise to the top of, you know, to the queue. Is it an actual budgeted, real-life, in existence position? That's going to rise up to, to the top over something that's like a, you know, a nice to have. In the perfect world, we would probably be working more closely with HR because really succession planning and what Councilmember Wilkinson was talking about, the brain drain, we should be worried about it. We, about 60% of our workforce could really technically retire tomorrow. And succession planning really is an HR function. We'd love to be a part of the conversation to sort of know what's the plan, what do you need in six months to a year, what's coming down the pike, because we could plan those things together. So really, just more robust communication with departments and hiring managers is always the number one priority. I think sometimes there's an assumption that we all know in civil service what's going on at the department level, and we, and we don't. I'd love to have the time to follow every department's budget, but that isn't always possible for, for us to know what's happening. So if somebody knows, you know, long in advance that they've got especially a one-off or difficult to recruit for, or a, an elevator inspector, for instance, position where it's been one person in the job for 30 years, and there's probably five people regionally that would ever even qualify for it, well, we should start really early. Right? So, I mean, more staff is always a possibility, for sure. I, I would hate to sort of throw a body at a, at a problem that we're not sure, do we need to tighten up our processes? 100%. Is there, is, should, is there a better way, or should we be simplifying something? Absolutely, we should. So I hate to say, let's throw more people at it until we feel like we've really audited ourselves and are doing the, you know, doing all we can do on our, on our terms first.
That's, I really appreciate that answer. It gives me a lot more insight. So thank you. I'm wondering, and I see Councilmember Wilkerson might have a question, but I'm wondering if there exists, or potentially could it exist, a shared document that kind of showed, these are the positions that you have been told are in the budget and are needed and are vacant and you're working on, and then maybe another tier of, hey, these are ones we've heard about. And we're, I'm just wondering if we all had that shared document, HR, you, council, the department heads, and then we would see, so that if there was a miscommunication or a gap of like, oh, no, that is budgeted, how come it's not in that? I'm just, do you think that would be possible if we all got together and figured that out? Okay, great. All right, I like it. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I only want to ask, except for the examiner position, is your department fully staffed?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Other question, or Judith, go ahead.
Susan. Okay. Am I unmuted?
We can hear you. Now we can't hear you. Just think. All right. Okay, I think we got you.
There you go. You should hear me?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkerson, you mentioned temp seasonals. I am in total agreement with you. In fact, I have had at least a couple of conversations, I know, with Joe Kavanaugh of Local 270, because I really want us, and, and I think Kelsey and I, Chief Examiner Pearson and I touched on this subject over coffee one day, of whether or not we might be able to at one point bring those temp seasonals together. I know Park Department hires a lot of those individuals in summer, so does the street department, so does the water department. Those are all people who learn those jobs. If we could encourage them to take the civil service tests and help them understand it isn't a frightening thing to do, I think that would be very wise for us too, because there's been staff at the city who have spent time training these individuals, and many of them, I know, when the park department come back year after year as temp seasonals, so let's get them on. And I also know, you mentioned retirement. Yes, we were given a statement of retirements a year ago that frightened the heck out of me, of the number of persons that are at an age that they could retire right now from the city. The pandemic may have held people up a bit, but I believe we've got to get people ready in every department to move into those positions sooner rather than later. So certainly, that's something that I, I'd like to pursue. The pandemic may have held people up a bit, but I believe we've got to get people ready in every department to move into those positions sooner rather than later. So certainly, that's something that I'd like to pursue.
Councilmember Wilkerson, you did have your hand up a couple speakers back, so I don't know if you had anything more you wanted to say.
No, I'm done. Thank you, Council President.
Great. Other questions, comments?
This is a personal note to Councilmember Stratton. Can she hear me? Your friend Tallulah is right here, and when she hears your voice, she looks up. I just had to tell her that.
Thank you.
She's laying down right now.
Okay. I had a question, probably more for Kelsey. So about a year ago, council was doing some hiring for staff, and it wasn't through civil service because it's exempt. But I was surprised to find out that it didn't seem like at that time HR really had a targeted advertising recruitment program for communities that have typically been marginalized in city employment. It was more of a, hey, we're going to advertise it, you know, kind of equally out there, and people will find their way. And I was, in my mind, thinking, no, we should really be more targeted, and we should talk to the Hispanic Business Association and NAACP and other places, just in addition to our general advertising, just being more targeted. So I'm just wondering what you, and I think I've talked to Katie Myers about this a little bit in the past, but I'm just wondering what your current strategies are for targeted outreach to just really grow the pool of exam takers, and if, what that is, and plans for further expanding that.
Absolutely. That's a great question. We have, you know, a sort of a standard group of platforms that we use that everything is advertised to, which is governmentjobs.com, Careers in Government, LinkedIn. And then we basically are doing targeted recruitments for especially public safety. We do like a diversity boost with Careers in Government, and then we usually move around to some of the local, more regional things. Yes, we have been Business Association, we advertise in the Black Lend, NAACP. It really is sometimes, Katie Myers, before Katie joined us last year, we didn't really have a communication or recruitment person that sort of built any of that out. It was really, and I'm sure that HR has kind of, we've all sort of been in the same boat, of sort of hodgepodge-ing things together with each recruitment. And Katie has really given us a much more standardized toolbox, toolkit for how we recruit, where we recruit, when is it appropriate to do this, when is it not? And I actually will have, Katie had to hop off of this meeting early because she had a pathway to public service meeting at 12:30 today, but I would like to send you all just what our recruiting toolkit looks like, so you can sort of see how we work, how we work with departments, and then what is our basic standard, what we do standard on every recruitment, so that you guys, so you can all see sort of what we do and how we operate. Sometimes the cost of things is a barrier, and we ask departments to kick in for some of the advertising. We have a, our advertising budget for a year is only $5,000. So that is, you know, with 100 recruitments, and especially some of these very difficult recruitments where we're spending, you know, $1,500 on a single recruitment, we have to be pretty careful with where we choose to spend our money, you know, we want the most banker of all, obviously. But I'll send you guys that documentation so you can sort of see what we're building, because it is certainly a work in progress.
Great. I think that's going to move the needle, I think, over time, so I really appreciate that. I don't have any more questions, any other questions or comments? All right. Well, with that, I just want to thank all the commission members for joining us and staff, and we won't wait five years to do this again. What I'm really interested in in our next meeting, and it may be a little bit later this year, but to me, there's several different functions of civil service. You know, we mentioned today the adjudication of complaints between labor and management. We've talked about position designs and testing. There's protections for employees for essentially with just cause protection and progressive discipline. And there's internal testing for promotional, and then there's testing for entry level. I'd like to just maybe tackle one or two of those each time we meet and get into that a little more, because I think sometimes when people hear, oh, maybe we could reform this, it's sort of like, we're getting rid of the whole Civil Service Commission. And I don't think that is a sense of council at all. I think there are some particular things that some people have ideas for, but it is, at least in my experience with the vast majority of council members, the idea of an independent agency that protects the process and the independence and employees is exactly what we want, and Spokane has a robust one. So I want to thank you all for your work and look forward to more, so that we can boldly go into the 21st century together with a revitalized workforce as people are transitioning, hopefully, to happy retirements. So thanks, everyone, for joining us. We'll see you in another few months. We'll schedule something else. And we're going to switch topics briefly to our last agenda item, which was an update on 100-day goals. And just to tee that up, in February, we passed a resolution and we set out 32 goals that we would like to get done in 100 days, and it was a little bit fuzzy on whether that was 100 days from January 1st or 100 days from February 1st when we passed it. We're past 100 days from January 1st. And so we have a spreadsheet that's color-coded. We've sent out to council and staff, and we'll have it on Facebook for people who are just watching and want to see it. But essentially, I'm just going to give a summary of the progress, and then if council members have questions about individual things, then we can talk about them. And I wanted to give a big kudos to policy staff led by Brian McClatchy, get it organized of which council members are working on which projects with which LA's and which policy staff. And so, but we can get to individual questions. But of the 32, eight of them have been completed, 16 of them are on track to be completed, and council staff are still working on them. Four of them have been changed just because of external things changing, but are still on track to be completed. There are three that council staff and council members have completed, and we're just waiting for the administration to finalize something. It might be send out the RFP or post a job description, something like that. And then really, there's only one that is stuck at this point, and that is, for anyone who cares, is cleaning up the West Quadrant TIF tax allocations. And that's partly because we have a, we're down one staff person on that, and we need some things on that. But everything else is moving ahead. So wanted to open it up to council members, to any questions about particular projects or comments, anything out there? I trust you all got it. Yes, Councilmember Mum?
Yeah, just a quick update on the TIF, what that's about. When we were looking into the TIF, we found a couple of our great programs were being taxed that were not supposed to be. And so, like, the conservation futures and some others were actually being taxed. And so we need to work with the county and possibly the state treasurer to fix that. And so it's a legal issue, and Tim Donovan had done the initial investigation, and I believe his work is finished, so now we're at the legal level. So it has progressed, but we are not in necessarily control of fixing it yet. So it's an intergovernmental issue that we are working on, and we will work to make it right.
Great. Thanks for that update. Okay. I'm not seeing any other questions from councilmembers. Great work, councilmembers and staff on that, and the administration. And I particularly wanted to single out Cupid Alexander and his team on working with council on it. They had a meeting with us, and they have their own spreadsheet of which projects impact their staff and which staff members are working on it. And it was really a nice model, because we could see what they were working on and what we were working on. So anyway, it's been a great process. We've gotten, I think, way more accomplished just by having this tool and putting it out there, and I look forward to coming back in about a month with just about all of it completed. So with that, I think we'll release you to your day and the end of your week and the weekend, and we'll be back, full city council meeting on Monday. We have finance and administration as our committee meeting, and then briefing at 3:30 and 6 o'clock legislative session. We're going to have a special appearance by Carol Evans, Chair of the Spokane Tribe, coming to give us a report on the state of the air, land, and water, and we'll be reading for the first time publicly our land acknowledgement, because it is going to be Earth Day next week as well. So with that, everyone, be well, and if you can, take care of somebody else, and have a great week.